If we don't have anybody on, we were putting the TVs on, nothing to present.
Speakers speak, they can monitor themselves if the timer is there. It's just saying.
I'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Seven oh four P M. If we can start with phenomenal silence, please. Stand for the flag of leaders.
The flag of the United States of America. And to the people for which it stands, a nation of your own. They give this all for the European justice world.
And just a reminder, if you have a cell phone on, please make sure that it's. For an officer on silent. City third, we go to take world talk, please.
Also, member Williams.
President.
Free. President Jackson here. Waller. Davis here.
Friends.
Here.
And Mayor Strider.
Here. Do I have a motion to approve of the agenda?
Some more.
Support.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose. That we're supposed to start with the presentation from the Albion fellows.
No.
They don't look to be here today. I said, they don't look to be here. Unfortunately. Um, maybe I can. Maybe I can lead it with a little what I know. Chief, did they happen to give you any information other than the fire?
No, I don't know so.
Okay, so um, I'll just give a quick rundown if you don't mind. Uh, the Albion fellows have a survey project that they have to do for. Um, this year in accordance with a project that they're running. And they will be surveying um. Citizen of citizens of Albion in Macintosh Park on July thirteenth from two to six P M. They're saying it's gonna be fun, family, friends and food. They plan on having uh food trucks out there available. For anybody that takes the survey, you'll get a um. A coupon to go to the food trucks as well, so it should be a very nice event. Um, unfortunately, they weren't able to attend today, but I know this is some that they've been working very diligent at.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, public comment. If there's anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and address counsel in regards to an agenda item. You may do so at this time and three minutes is yours. We know where we're at. We're going on. Do I have a motion to approve of the concerned calendar items, which are. Are June seventeenth study session minutes? The regular session minutes and the approval of closing city hall at noon on July twenty fifth.
Support.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
I propose. Do I have a motion to approve of the twenty twenty four M M O liability and property pool renewal?
Some more.
For. This is. This is our annual renewal for uh city insurance um. For the July two thousand and twenty four through June of twenty five. Uh, the renewal is two thousand three hundred and eight. Thousand three hundred and eight thousand four hundred and seven dollars with new vehicles adding additional four thousand five hundred and eighty two dollars.
Any questions or assistance? What's the city manager?
Right. Three responses were received. The lowest bidder was the Albion E D C at fifty thousand dollars and it is recommended for approval.
So Margaret, I did have a question based off of the information that was provided in the packet. So is it just the E D C in regards to the entity that's the grant administrator or you the grant administrator? Does it have to be a specific person? Do you know?
My understanding is. Well, the short answer is no, it doesn't have to be a specific person. The entity of the E D C is gonna be the administrator. Virgie is obviously C E O and president, so she will be heading everything. Um, myself as the grant writer and one of our colleagues, Angela Davis is also a grant administrator on staff. So it's kind of a team effort for the E D C.
So it doesn't have to be a specific person named as the administrator?
No, not um, we did have to show that Virgie as the president's C E O was qualified to be handling such funds. So we kind of demonstrated that in the proposal to say she's handled C B G funds in the past through. My Hope and My Neighborhoods at Albion E D C and then Hope Network and various other things, so she's the primary in everything.
Okay, yeah, we had information in there for her and for you, so I just wanted to know.
Yeah, it's a joint effort for sure.
No problem. Anybody else have any questions in regards to this item? City clerk, come here.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four twenty three to amend resolution uh for the mission to.
Some more support.
District community.
The M S H D A has asked that we list all possible dozen needs for the city manager on the resolution operating the city. The city's M S H D A chill grant application. Language has been added to include city manager, acting or interim city manager and assistant city manager. The M S H D A has reviewed and approved the language has changed.
Do you have any questions for our assistant city manager? City clerk, come here.
Also, member Jackson.
Yes.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve of the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four oh two to amend chapter thirty four, the community development.
So some will support.
Um, so this is a part of the uh. Sale of Maple Grove, they've requested a pilot ordinance. Pilot stands for payment in lieu of tax, so. Instead of assessing, uh, once, obviously the property doesn't currently pay. Property taxes because it's owned by a public entity. Once it shifts to private ownership. They'd be subject to tax, um, so they've requested a pilot. What a pilot does is they pay a specified amount um each month in lieu of paying taxes. That amount is a percentage multiplied by the uh rents that they're receiving from the um. It's a percentage of the rents that they receive from the occupants of of Maple Grove. Um, the city currently has several pilots in place. We have one with Lincolnshire. We have one with Oak Meadows. Um, we had some back and forth with the owners um regarding the percentage. We settled at six percent. Uh, because that will allow um the city to cover. The services that the city is going to provide. Um, the duration of it um is basically up to fifty years. Um, or whenever they're um they have a mortgage out when the. Uh, mortgage loan is basically paid, whichever is shorter, so. Um, we're recommending approval.
Questions? Oh, what does that really look like in terms of tentative amounts or do you have any kind of estimate in terms of what it will look like?
So ballpark, it's about six percent is about forty five thousand dollars a year. And that forty five thousand dollars is split between the city and all the other taxing entities, so like the school district, county. Um, so roughly the city. I got, I got numbers right here. Oh, all right, well, there you go. The estimates from the assessor is the payment, the pilot at six percent will be close to thirty seven thousand dollars with the eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty. Uh, would cover the city and the remainder would go to the schools and and county. And the library.
The schools in the county?
The county, the schools and the library. So eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars will come to the city and twenty five thousand two hundred and forty would be distributed between the schools, the library and county.
Our, our district, our school district.
Anybody have any other questions? City clerk, come here.
Also, member Davis.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. So is this the next item is that, are we just discussing? Right, so next is our discussion on the fire training facility. Uh, Deputy Chief Burn.
Good evening, council. Uh, as I stated in the study session, like I wanted to apologize for. Not getting my words. Properly put down on paper, so I'm sorry if I confuse everybody. Um, what we're looking to do is build this uh fire train facility basically out shipping containers is what it, what they are. That allows us to do live burns. That's something that we're not allowed to do at all without this type of facility. What I did is I got with um. Uh, Joe and Steve Caldwell from Carr Brothers, uh, because their Carr Brothers have been doing business with the city for as long as I've been here, twenty five years or more. Um, and I trust their opinion. Joe is also a firefighter with Sheridan Township, so I kind of wanted another outside opinion, make sure I was considering everything. Um, and they put together this, uh, it's not really a bid, but I wanted to give you all a price. Of what the absolute most it would cost for materials to be hauled in for them to do absolutely all the site work possible. Um, and I told him, I said, I need the absolute highest price so I can give the council some sort of solid figures. So I'm not just coming up and asking for you to shift a hundred thousand dollars from one line item to the other without having some sort of substance to it, so. I plan on still getting bits, a bit, three bits uh as required by a charter. Um, Councilman Williams brought up a great point. I'm gonna make sure that our engineering firm is involved in this as well. Make sure we're good to go on that end of it. And so I just wanted to kind of tell you, this is the idea. This is the price that I've gotten thus far. Um, and want to know if you'd be willing to shift some money around. I got with. Uh, Director Clark. Uh, to make sure that we had enough money. That's the first thing the chief said after he rolled his eyes. He looked at me and said, we'll talk to the money man. So I went and talked to the finance director. He said we have enough money there. I moved some things around, so that's where I met with this.
Councilman French.
I, I think this is a marvelous idea. Do you, uh, do you think we could make it just in terms of tuition or payments for firefighters elsewhere to come to Albion? Could we get fifteen, twenty thousand a year? Is it more like ten?
It was probably.
Like ten?
It's probably ten. There, they don't have the funding mechanisms that law enforcement has.
Yeah.
And one of the other things I mentioned about that is Sheridan Township in particular asks us on a regular basis about us paying for them to come to assist us with fires in the city.
Yeah.
Where this is another tool that we have to allow them to do things that would equate to the equal payments, you know?
I'm, I'm just looking at the R O I. I think, you know, just under twenty years, we're fine.
Yeah.
And that's what it sounds like it's gonna be, so.
Because we do rely heavily on mutual aid for fighting fire from both Albion and Sheridan Township, so this would be a way of paying them back without.
And we currently have nothing to train. We have nothing to train with live fires other than an actual structure burning.
Yeah.
And that's something that we need to have.
Yeah, excellent, excellent. Thanks for your initiative. Like it.
Councilman Davis.
Yes, what is the duration of this in terms of how long will it last? How long to be able to?
What's nice about it? It's, it's replaceable. So if one of the shipping containers gets damaged, we can easily swap it out for a different one. Um, the biggest thing that you have to do when you're spraying and you have a fire going on the inside is keeping the structure cool on the outside. So that's why we would have a fire hydrant right there where we could spray some water on the outside of it while the firefighters are going up through to put the fire out. And the fire consists of pallets, some hay or straw that'll be lit just before they get up there. It's not like it's just sitting there burning while we're. Having lunch or a break or something like that. It's. We light it, they get ready to go up, they do what they need to do while another crew is keeping water spraying up the outside, so it doesn't start uh bowing in the sidewalls. So that's, y- you could easily get a, a good ten, fifteen years out of just one container as long as it's maintained.
And what are the costs of the container?
So you're looking at forty nine hundred for a one-way forty-foot container. So one-way means it, it came over the ocean one time and that was it. And then it was sold off. We can get watertight ones for a little bit less money. They're usually pretty good shape, but you're kind of taking a risk on it. And so while it may hold water, the side may be caved in. And if we have another shipping container on top of it, you don't want to have that. You want to have the best of the best. As your foundation. So that's why I was like, you know what? We'll just plan on forty nine hundred per forty footer and then thirty one twenty four uh twenty footer, and that's delivered. Sweet.
So I also see the validity of, you know, giving you the green light to move forward with doing the research and the pricing. Um, something else I would like to see. So like you said, if planting has a facility like this, what other area municipalities have something like this?
Ann Arbor has one. Uh, Grand Rapids is working on one right now along with Walker, I believe it is. Um, Kalamazoo has a, a big tower that they built. All of those are well over two hundred. The, the cheapest one I found so far that they had built was two hundred thousand. And it's the same thing, shipping containers, but they didn't, they didn't do any of the work.
So like I was saying, if I, we can get that info, how long they've had them? Um, because also kind of going with Councilman Frank's sentiment like or Councilman Davis is like, how long will this last for the money? Um, but also the type of training. I mean, I don't see like training on a house fire in one of those storage things because it's not gonna burn the same way.
No. I mean, you'll have wood and, and different things that can burn, but we're not hauling in couches. We're not hauling in bed frames and, and so forth, so.
But it's still going into a building with a lot of smoke and some fire, which you can't do and you don't get that unless you actually do it. And good example of this, um, I, I started, I, I went to the Fire Academy in. Ninety-five and you went in.
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight. He went to Kalamazoo. I went to County County. I got no live burn training at all. Um, and he had live burn training almost every other day.
Every single day.
Yeah.
Kalamazoo. We went through, we actually got yelled at because we melted a couple of fire helmets. We took out a couple of air packs. It was literally non-stop fire burning all day long. It was four stories tall to the point where. Uh, they would do back drafts and show you how it would explode. Uh, they would actually get the right room going. You'd have to stand up. Instructor would open up the nozzle or the latch up front and say, here it comes, and hit you with the fire hose and the steam would shove you to the ground. And then he'd make you sit there and lay there and go, okay, see this layer? This is usually the temperature here. This is what you got here and this is what you got there. Nobody does that.
And so in like our academy, they don't have the facilities to do that in County County. Most of our people have gone on through County Counties. Um, back when they were, they were hiring people, um. When we got hired, they were sending some of them to Kalamazoo, um, and so they got the better training over there because they had the facilities. If we have that facility here, then County County will have that for their training because we'll allow them to use that. Um, it only cost us like five hundred dollars to send people through County County where Kalamazoo is probably five, six, yeah, four thousand, so for first, big difference in price.
Yep, start coming this way.
Right, yeah.
Just get it going.
Yeah.
So.
Councilman Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. Yeah, I also think this is a good idea. I know we have a lot of volunteer fire, firemen um in the area. And, you know, having the resources, not knowing that, you know, you guys didn't have that trainer, don't have that trainer, having those resources so close to home will be valuable. Thank you.
Excellent.
Wonderful.
Finally, one with you. Public safety's where our officers are cross-trained and we've had situations where not our, a lot of our officers weren't cross-trained, so they couldn't help. And that's, you know, a disservice to our community, I think, so. Like I said, I, I see the importance of this and I would definitely be in support of all the board members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you for your work so much. Do I have a motion to approve of the D P W enterprise, enterprise lease purchase?
Oh, support.
And. Manager or Deputy Chief Burn?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, because I have.
Okay, currently we lease our vehicles, uh, D W's newer vehicles are through the pickup trucks, I should say, are through enterprise leasing. We're paying about ninety seven thousand, ninety nine thousand a year for ten vehicles. The cost for us to buy a vehicle like that, let's just say it's forty five to fifty thousand per truck. There is no way that we could have ten brand-new trucks under warranty. For ninety seven thousand dollars a year. What's nice about this is that once we're done paying the lease program, that truck has equity in it that we're able to roll into the next payment of the truck. To bring that payment down for the next one after, the next, the following vehicle we release. That's something that they all opportunity municipalities. So that's why a lot of municipalities take advantage of enterprise leasing. Right now, we still need two more vehicles. We've just pulled out uh. Three more trucks that are getting switched out from three-quarter ton, four-wheel drive. Extended cab pickups to something that will give us more equity, which is a one-ton four-door truck. For one, it's a one-ton compared to a three-quarter ton. For the stuff that we do, we need the heavier duty truck. The biggest thing though is the resale value that we're gonna get. Nobody really wants an extended cab. Everybody wants a four-door truck. Everybody wants a four-wheel drive truck, a heavy-duty work truck. So if we go with these type of vehicles, we're gonna be able to get more money back to put on next payment, the next truck payment. Unfortunately, we're stuck because right when we did the order, market tanked. And so we're stuck with three vehicles that I cannot cash in until August of twenty five. Once we cash those in, it'll be going towards the same four-door one-ton trucks. Um, what we're looking to do for wastewater treatment plant, they don't need a four-wheel drive, four-door one-ton truck. But what they do do is they go to a lot of training. We have been harping on sending our people to training, especially this last one was up in Mount Pleasant. For a week-long school. They also do a lot of things where they run around town, um, get parts and so forth, but they don't need a one-ton. So that's why I went with a cheaper truck for a half-ton truck. Uh, that still will give us good equity when we go to turn it in. So I went with a half-ton Chevy Silverado. Um, and I also worked with Enterprise because they're telling us this is the truck you want, because if you go this route, you're gonna be underwater instead of above water. So we're also looking to add one more one-ton truck to the fleet, so we'll have a total of ten trucks. Up until, I'm sorry, a total of twelve. From our current ten. However, in August, when I can turn one of those trucks in. I'm going to take and re, we have one truck that's coming available that we can put a little bit of money into, make sure it's got a new bed, it's sound and it's in good working condition. That I think I can move somewhere in the fleet and then save us a thousand fifty-two a month in payments. So about twelve thousand six hundred come August. So we'll go from twelve down to eleven trucks come August of twenty five. But I won't be able to do that until that timeframe when I can free up the other truck. And then evaluate it from there. So mainly this is a, we've already done the renewals on our, our leases, but this is to add two more trucks to the lease agreement.
Do you have any questions for Deputy Chief Burn?
Not a question, but no more to say. A great job. You did a good job with all the numbers in you.
Thank you.
Yeah, because I was looking up and adding up when you had to.
Well, I can't.
Between.
Make this finance director all the time.
Between the, the years, you know.
It's got a back.
Years and months, yeah, the years and the months.
He sees you come, he's out the back door.
Jason, Jason read his office form, so he still owes me a little bit.
Any other questions or comments in regards to this item? City clerk, come here.
Also, member French.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. Next is our discussion on speed times. So maybe with them, Jackson, let's see if you put their name on it, but I'll stop.
You sure? Yes, back. So I know, um, the last meeting I was asking you to price out some more, um, speed signs. So we do know Erie Street, they are still flying up and down here, which are the semis. That's on your west, I mean, towards the east and then also on Superior Street.
Mm-hmm.
I was told that you could handle Superior Street, but I thought maybe you could get some help with the speed though.
Right.
I guess, you know, reason why, because it's the same trucks that are flying up and down there.
Yeah.
So you could, look at, most of them are down at the end.
Yeah.
Uh, but yes.
Going out of town or coming in?
They're going out, but they can't make it.
Yeah.
Correct. The most favorite truck drivers too on these papers are flying up and down both Erie and Superior Street.
The, so the one sign I think is still up on Kennedy Street. I believe that's still operating as my people haven't told me it's not.
It is.
Yeah.
That's my, yeah, it was.
The second sign that got broken, I finally got parts for it, and so I should have that fixed tomorrow, I hope. Uh, they wanted me to ship it back to the company and for nine dollars I could fix it myself, so I figured it'd be easier just to fix it myself. Um, we did get the, we do have a trailer that will also do the same thing. I just haven't had a chance to do anything with that yet. Um, and then if we want to look at purchasing more, they run right around four thousand dollars each.
Okay.
Um, I didn't realize I had quite as much money as I did in my budget, so there's a possibility I could probably buy one of those or two of them maybe.
That's an expert too.
Yeah.
Case somewhere, you know, when it goes down, you can get.
What Jason asked for, that's like nothing.
So I'm, I'm asking that you get two of those.
All right.
Or.
Be that.
See.
Yeah.
Like those, it's a high. You know, we have pedestrians back and forth here, but we have children and older.
Oh, yeah.
In Erie Street.
Yeah.
And that's where the buses, they come and go as well, so.
Okay. I think I can hear it right now.
All right. Any comments? All right, um. Do I have a motion to approve rejecting any and all bids for contract aid with the water treatment?
Some more.
The porch.
It's fine.
So the letter, uh, I think you all received from Whitman, explaining this, um, but they're asking to reject the bids only for contract A for the improvements of the water treatment plant. Um, one of the bids was brought in and popped across the table as bid openings began and they believed that that was not appropriate. Um, and shouldn't be included in the second bid, um, was non-conforming and non-responsive, um, and so they want to reject all these bids and then rebid this out. This one project. Uh, the remainder of these projects will be brought to council on the fifteenth for approval.
Questions for Assistant City Manager? Mayor Jackson, please, some you agree with it?
Yes. Uh, this was recommended by Whitman, our engineer. Um, they strongly suggest we do it this way. Um, there's a lot more money to this that has to be explained to, but the rebidding of the water treatment plant, there's some stuff that was added. There, there were several things that were added over time that we're gonna look at possibly removing from that bid as well to lower the pricing on some of the issue. Some is one of the issues that we have, so. Um, but because the way these bits came in, um, we think it's better to rebid this at this point.
All right, that makes sense. You have a question or comments? City clerk, come here.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. Future agenda items. Like to see. Councilman Williams.
Um, when the presenters are here, would you have them do it under the public camera section?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Future agenda items? Right?
Um. I have something that I'd like possibly discuss. So, um, over the last couple of years, we've had more and more homeless people in Albion. I get complaints continuously about people sleeping downtown or trying to stay in the parks. We have no ordinances whatsoever that cover any of that or anything that we can do about that. If somebody wants to pitch a tent, I mean, parks, we have, you can't, you can't be there after dark. That's a park rule that we can enforce. Um, but on city property, if somebody want to put a tent up front of city hall, um, there's really nothing we can do to stop those things from occurring. Um, just last week, the Supreme Court ruled that cities can have ordinances that make that illegal. Um, and so I think it's something that we should look at or discuss possibly and how we may want to do that um before it becomes a problem. Um, we had somebody show up yesterday with a tent and try to stay in one of the parks and, um, we dealt with that as well because it was a park, but. Again, we have a lot of public spaces that we don't have anything that would cover this at all, and with this new Supreme Court ruling, we, we could have rules about that, so.
So would there be, I know, understand, no in the park, but do we have a location or something? Where they can.
Well. We don't have anything in town, but we could discuss that. We could designate an area. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying we just tell homeless people they can't stay in Albion. Um, but I think we do have to put some rules in certain places where we don't necessarily want tenant camps popping up that we can't control.
So discussion.
Now, I was, um. I was glad to see when I got back to town that at least there are. Uh, auction signs on Austin Avenue. And the totally dilapidated, uh, two houses that used to be the barber shop, Mrs. Crenshaw. Um. Can you kind of just update us on what is actually happening with a lot of the dilapidated homes, so? Here's an update on.
Yeah, I'll try to get one. I know an email went out today from, from, uh, City Manager Snyder, reference, uh, the land bank. And some properties that they're gonna take care of, um, and obviously we're working on the properties that have been fire damaged. Um, and so I think there's a lot happening, but I'll try to get all that.
Alright, thank you.
Any other items? Great. So I do see that Fire McGaswell and his students are here.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, good evening, council. My name is Arvin Casco. I'm the executive director of special programs at Albion College. And one of my tasks is to oversee the Build Albion fellows. Uh, currently, uh, five fellows, rising juniors are working on, uh. Collecting community data related to housing and equity. So that's a project they're working on, been working on about a year. Now, and so they had the bright idea of having a community. Had the bright idea of doing a community-based, uh. Activities, so they can, uh, incentivize data collection and completing the survey. So, Bree, you ready? The floor is yours.
So, uh, hi, my name's Bree. Um, so basically, we want to something that would actually help the community and stuff, but also give them something. Where they feel like the Albion College students are a part of like the Albion community still, just because we all are Albion College students. But also from Albion, so we, um, we wanted this event to basically be for the kids, but like. It's a free event for everything, but we wanted the incentive for the survey to be where. The only way they can get food is if they have a survey done and that will give us all the information and data we would like. But we really just wanted to be getting the data, but also as supplying like a day, just for like the community to come together. And actually like, all of the community, not just, you know, certain groups or anything. We want to make sure everyone is included, so we like. July thirteenth, we would like it, and we would also like to have it at the splash pad. Three to seven P M. We would like to successfully get a hundred and seventy surveys at least. We, we have a dollar five hundred like for the whole year for it, but that's how many.
How many surveys have we?
One twenty. We have one twenty. I got.
Just throw your voice a little back.
So yeah, we basically just wanna have like the cities like.
Support?
Support, yes. I wanna have the support, and so just to make sure that we're all together instead of, you know, divided.
So I guess just a, a clarifying question.
Yeah.
The flyer says two to six, but he said.
At least two to six.
Two to six, okay. Okay.
Councilman French?
Um. So for those folks who may or may not be able to be there, will there be an online version of this assessment that?
There's a QR code.
Yeah, there's a QR code.
Um, so basically, you can either register when you make it there with your kids and stuff, get tickets and all of that. Or you can pre-register just so when you get there, all you gotta do is check in because we will be the ones checking everybody in, but we will have the other students. Doing their surveys themselves, so that they can just.
Right.
Not have people like trying to specify, give the information. But yeah, we're allowing free registration on like our flyers and stuff. We will have those out soon. And yeah, we allow the pre-registration and stuff, just so it's less stressful when they do get there and it's not as put together.
Yes, yeah.
What day of the week is the thirteenth?
So, Saturday. It's a Monday breakfast.
Yeah, cuz the.
Yes, Saturday afternoon.
We don't have any. Typically the process, if you're going to reserve a party.
Yeah.
Have to, but. I don't know that's happened, if we have anything, I, I just don't want there to be a conflict.
Yeah.
Because if somebody else had reserved, but I don't think we have had anything for that. Especially like if you're gonna be planning on using the pavilion.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes people have parties and they reserve that, so I just wanna make sure you guys are not gonna have any issues.
Tomorrow morning, Bree, gonna come down to city hall, you're gonna fill out a form.
So that it's in your name.
Yeah, I'm sorry, y'all, this is my first time. I did when you guys, and I forgot to mention this part. This is something that I want to create to be annual also, like, so we wanted to just. Something every year so that they know that we aren't separated from them, so that they can also know the fellows when they do get older. Since it's a kids event for the most part, just so that they can also know when they get older that this is something that exists. Because also another thing is many people don't know that fellows exist. Not gonna lie, I didn't know it exists till like a week before I had my interview. But I think this is also just gonna be able to build a way for the kids to know this is something that they can do in the future. Because they don't know, so just a way for them to know this is something that. If you join the fellows, this is something that you'll get, this is like the community and everything that you'll get from it.
Councilman Evans?
Uh, yes, how are you going to share the results of your survey?
So.
So this was your brain trust. Remember way back when you asked me about how we connect residents to Habitat for Humanity? So we developed this, this survey. It's a data spreadsheet, so it's a Google. It's a, it's a Google form that, uh, compiles it into a spreadsheet, so it's shareable. Uh, some of the residents have questioned who is going to be shared with and how, and so, uh, I've limited to nonprofits. And this, uh, municipal, uh, city of Albion, so because people are like, well, who wants to know? Uh, so it's shareable. And it's now local.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Williams?
Um, thank you so much, Bree. No, thank you, and we support you, and we'll definitely share all the information so we can get as many people to the park as possible to take your survey.
We really wanna make sure I get to the kids, so any ways I can help out.
Thank you.
Okay.
So if there is a QR code that can be sent out, can you email that to council? Because like council members have email distributions to their constituents, they can push that out. For anybody who can't make it, I'm sure you want to get as many responses as possible. Um, so we can help push that out for you all, just as long as we can get that.
Okay.
Any other questions for Congress? Alright, thank you both for waiting and for being here. Anybody else like to stand and address council?
Alright, well, piggybacking on a couple things, um. You all know that I'm, uh, my name is Scott Avery, by the way, two four one seven seven F Drive South, Alma, Michigan. Uh, I currently serve as the board chair and about a creek area Habitat for Humanity. So, uh, my emphasis for being here was actually to, uh, come in and remind council that. Uh, we do have two programs outside of building homes. Um, we have the ramp program, which you probably you've seen. Sporadically throughout the last several years, uh, we also have small home repairs, which, um. Generally fall under a hundred dollars, but it allows people to age in, age in their homes. Um, they're very small repairs, but they do, um, help people with things that they just may not be able to take care of. So, uh, if you have constituents that need to, you know, uh, have some repair like that done. I, I encourage you, them and you to reach out to Habitat. Um, the list is not super long right now, uh, but as we all know, with anything administrative, everything takes time. So the sooner you're not on the list, the sooner you're not on the bottom of the list, so, um. And my second point would be, uh, which I had no, um. Idea I'd be speaking to is on the issue of homelessness and those who are unhoused. I work in Kalamazoo and I help several days a week with the unhoused. I. Uh, reach out, fix bikes for the unhoused so that they can, um, get to appointments in social services. I help to meet exigent needs during the heat streak we just had, um. The SCOTUS decision. I'll give you my two second, uh, take on it. It's a travesty and it's immoral. So, that being said, uh. We have a duty, I've, I've taught my kids and my parents taught me, we have a duty to help people when they need help. Right? So we help them now so that someday they can help someone else. So the idea of, you know, coming up with, or starting from a framework of. You know, where can we put people or where can they, we make sure that they can't be, the idea should be more of how do we work with people? Um, I have met a lot of people in the last four and a half years of, that are down on their luck. I have met people that are in traumatic situations growing up. And it has exacerbated into rampant, you know, endemic drug use. And that is all, you know, part and parcel of a trauma that they've lived through. So. The. Just to reiterate, the, the point is that we are called by our better angels to help those who need help. So I think if you're going to come up with a plan on how that's gonna happen here in Albion, that should be the starting point. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to stand and address council?
Hello, everyone, again, part three, um, Margaret Avery, two two eight Old Orchard Place, um. I just wanted to thank everyone on council for the chill grant approval. If you have any questions, I would love for you to reach out to me or Virgie. Um, and that's my E D C, thank you. And then my second thing, just real quick, is also on the housing and homelessness issue. Um, the E D C has, I'm sure all of you know, a ten point plan to address housing. And supply resources, and we also really are prioritizing in the coming years, including this year. Equitable division of resources and Albion being a very small place, and since I don't primarily reside in Albion, I also live in Kalamazoo, Michigan. And they do have active like criminalizing ordinances, um, for homelessness, and I've seen the effects of that. Not insinuating anything, but I do know that the E D C would love to be a part of creating a solution. Um, it's part of our ten point plan to address housing. I would love to be included in on those conversations, as would Virgie, I'm sure. Um, just making sure that we're committing to our values, our morals and our mission. Of making sure that our resources are equitable, they're not pushing out a population that's already here. The population and demographic in Albion is very unique, um, and we wanna make sure that we're not pushing anyone out as we try to. Boost our economy and create more things in this area. That's definitely a priority for myself personally. Um, and definitely professionally as well. So those are my two cents there, but again, thank you everyone on council for the chill grant as far as that's concerned. Please reach out to me with any questions.
Any other like to stand and address council? Thanks, seeing the movement, um. Any managers report?
Don't have a whole lot. Um, I just wanna thank, uh, our staff, uh, both public services and public safety for the fine work that they did this last week. Or weekend, uh, there were a lot of events in town. Um, I don't know if everybody knows everything that was going on, but there was a car safety, car, car seat. Child car seat safety event at the, uh, fire station, and then we had the health and safety expo at the fire station as well. We had the bluegrass festival downtown, we had the car show downtown, we had the five K run, all of which off, went off successfully, uh, with no problems. And, uh, I think our staff did a great job of making all that stuff happen, oh, and the art fair at the water tower as well. Um, so there was just a lot going on this weekend and everything went really well, uh, and, and all aspects of that, so. Uh, additionally, uh, I got news today that our brand new fire truck will be here in the morning, so, uh. We will finally be getting our truck that I've been waiting forever for, so. So that was all.
Any questions for Assistant City Manager, City Manager Kip?
Just to post it when it gets here so we can see it or let us know, we'll come down.
They said first thing in the morning, so it should be here.
Is that like eight AM?
Morning, I don't know. Like, he said, he said it was gonna be here this afternoon and it didn't make it, so. There was actually a recall part on it and they've been waiting on the part to replace the part, so.
Great, Councilmember Cummins? Councilman Wade?
Now, age before.
Okay.
I'd just like to again say thank you to the city workers. They have been absolutely fantastic, and the other day we went out. To find out what they wanted to do about the city party. And, and also, uh, we wanted to invite any council members who would like to come. It's gonna be the twenty sixth of July. And it's gonna be at Holland Park, and we're planning to have, uh, a lot of fun things to do, uh, with our workers and. Uh, but they are, are just really excited, I'd say, about how. The council is working al- along with the administration to get them the things that they need. They were bragging about their new trucks, they were bragging about being able to have things to do the work that they needed to do. And I think that's absolutely fantastic. I think that's what we need to be doing, is providing for them the things that's gonna make their jobs more efficient and, and. Them be able to do the things, and it, it's showing, it's showing, they're smiling, they're talking, and they're, they're just really, really having. You know, I'm, I'm enjoying it because that's my buddies.
Alright, uh.
Thank you, Barry. You may be looking my friend apart. Okay, now, um, to piggyback off of what, uh. Assistant City Manager Kip said about, uh, the events that take, that took place over the course of the weekend. I definitely wanna say it's good to see so much going on in the city of Albion, um, so many people put, um. Put their personal time to the side to make sure that the city, um, and the community members all have something to do here over the course of the weekend. Everything went off well, um, from the informational stuff, um, the health and, um, the, the health and the, the. The information that you receive there, along with just being able to listen to bluegrass music down at the, um. Down at the Malibu, but also sitting under the water tower and enjoying the art as well. So I think it was a very beautiful weekend in the city of Albion, and hopefully we can continue to have many more of those.
Any other comments?
Just, I'm sorry, I missed it. Yeah, sure.
We're past all the comments, so. Um, I will say that the Greater Albion Chamber of Commerce. Did meet the goal, uh, raising the funds needed for their fall fireworks show, which will be this Wednesday night. Um, so I'm hoping and keeping fingers crossed that the mother will cooperate with us at all, rain in the morning and the, in the evening. So that the community can come out, um, and you know, heading on again, along with the great work that parks, uh. Group have been doing, Barnes Park is in great shape and ready for people to come down. And enjoy the fireworks show down by the river. Also, I know the cemetery is ready to go, so a lot of different spaces. Uh, for people to come in and park the cars and enjoy hopefully a great firework. Did you? Have something to say?
No, I just, if you haven't had a rain out a long time.
Great, do you not have a motion to. Support. Uh, if they ever say aye. Meeting adjourned, seven fifty three P M.
Meeting adjourned, seven fifty-three P M.
Yeah, I wasn't even there today, you know. I will.
Thank you, congratulations.
Oh, thank you, man. Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's something I'm not doing because it should be coming in.
We got the Sparrow at three thirty in the afternoon.
Okay.
And he was progressing.
And I, I, I want my. Notification and I.
Friday morning, the twenty first. And so. And we spent a couple hours in recovery, then mother baby unit. Um we didn't sleep for probably close to sixty hours and uh then the night nurse came in doing, do you want to take him for a couple hours, you guys can, and we're like. So he's doing better though, he's like, we can usually get him to zonk out for like two, three, sometimes four hours at a time, he's bigger, so I mean, he takes more formula, so he sleeps a bit longer. So my mom was here last week and. That's how you, so, um, but I think what she did, trying to get, trying to get the break out of this elevator, it was like. Like last night, it was really, I see.